Okay, so I said that we, welcome back, everybody. I said that we would start with our 6.9 item, so let's go ahead and stick with that. Our 1 P M. Consideration of Lake County Tourism Improvement District 2023 Annual Marketing Report. And with us, we have Brian Fisher. Would you like to take a seat in front? No, 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 like right here. I'm not kicking you out.
Easier for me to see.
Perfect than standing right there. I just wanted you to be comfortable.
That's where it's gonna be, Joanna? Thank you. Yep. That'll be a lot easier. So thank you, Brian Fisher, the Executive Director of Visit Lake County C A, the T I D here. This, I think, is our fifth, maybe fourth annual report. So it's kind of, it's nice as we hit our stride. I was just mentioning to Supervisor Crandall that we've, you know, after a few years, you get, you know a little bit more what you're doing. And so we look forward to just taking you through today. And I know you guys are pressed on time, so let's rock this. This is our agenda. Our board members, really only two changes on the board from the last time we met together. It was Jeff Plecher at Robinson. And then we've got Jeff Warrenburg at Conacta Harbor. The rest of our board members have stayed the same. They stayed involved. We continue to have quarterly meetings. And, you know, it's a good, it's a good solid board. I call on people all the time for stuff that I need. So tourism and its economic impact. We all know that it's a major driver of an industry here in Lake County. This was our 2023 revenue, which was, we saw an 18% increase over 22 revenue at the T I D. I think the most important part of this is to look, and you can see that both the county and then that, that contribution from T O T that you guys make is about 73% of Visit Lake County's budget. So really important. And we have smaller partners, but we really, we, we can't say enough about how important the county is in this, this configuration here. Next is a slide from Visit Califor-- or excuse me, this is our three-year comparison. So now, again, we've got some data to look at, three years. We know where we're coming from. And you can see we had a bit of a dip in '22. We are, we, we do cash, our accounting is on a cash basis. And so we realize revenue when we receive it and we expense things when we have expenses, not versus an accrual basis. So it can swing from year to year, which you could see can make it really difficult to sometimes budget. We don't know, because maybe a check comes in, in 2020. In this case, it didn't come in in 2023. So, and that would have been the third quarter of 2022. So it gets confusing, but we're, we're kind of finding our stride there. So we, this year, we're budgeted for 2024 at $516,000. So we're growing it, and we're going to continue to grow it. And then Visit California, the most important thing here, you guys, there's a lot of data. But there's two things that I want to show you here, is that Lake County continues to be on a growth trajectory for tourism. It's a good growing industry for our county. It's one that we all need to get behind support, so we thank you for your support. The other thing that you can't really see over there is our share of regional spending. For the first time I've been doing this, we beat Del Norte County. We came in fourth, or a third instead of fourth. So we grabbed a percentage share. So that's good. This is good. And next slide, please. The economic impact. And we all know that it's not just about my stakeholders. It's about really the entire community. One, for every $1 somebody gets, that they spend in a stakeholder establishment, they're going to spend $3 somewhere else. Restaurants and food services is the top category. So all boats rise when tourism increases in Lake County. 23 marketing plan. This is how we really judge our success, and this is how we measure ourselves. Website traffic, social media growth and engagement, campaign impressions and performance, email database growth leads, marketing partnerships and our public relations. And the first one, we're going to look at our website traffic. I can't give you a comparison from '22 to '23 because Google Analytics switched everything. They switched platforms from Google Analytics to G A four. So everybody kind of lost their data, but suffice it to say, we have a lot of page views. We have had a lot of users and a great deal of sessions. Most important is this quadrant over in the corner, the top referral sources, organic search. Hey, that means people are looking for us. That's a good thing. That's a really good thing to have at the top. We don't pay for that. Second is direct, another one we don't pay for. Granted, they might be looking for Lake County, Florida, Lake County, Illinois, who knows? But they're typing in direct and they're coming to our, to us. Paid search is just that. It's, it's a pay-to-play. Organic search and then paid social, again, those are the top pillars, six pillars or five pillars that really kind of support our website. And then next is our book direct widget, which is what we use a lot on, as a landing for everything. We really try to direct people right to a booking page, get them here. We saw over 56,000 searches on our book direct widget last year. That is up tremendously from the prior year. And people, you know, you can't say enough about how people are looking, where do, where can I go say that? That's where they're sampling our inventory. It's a good thing, and we're going to continue with our book direct widget. And we, we, it's, it's actually a lot of fun. There's a lot of cool data in there, but Book Direct has done great with its leads. Organic social media, thank you, Karen Pavoni. She does an amazing job with our social media folks. 2.8% increase in Facebook followers in '23 and a 13% increase in our Instagram followers in '23. So great stuff, a lot of out-of-county performance there. If you'll notice, a lot of it's video, too. That's, that's a big change. We're, we're doing a lot more video. We're doing a lot more stuff to engage people because really short-form video is where social media is at right now. So happy to see these kind of numbers. Monthly blog, that's okay. The monthly blog and our newsletter, that's a, it's, it's really the foundation of kind of our stuff. We get to own all these people, which is great. In '23, we had 9,000 contacts. Our open rate was really super great, definitely above industry average, and our click-through rate was very good. We see that people who click through to our website from our newsletter spend a lot of time on the website. Best, best visitor to your website you can get is somebody who come from your newsletter. The other thing that we did is we really tried to dig into what can we, what can we, what kind of promise can we make to somebody who's coming to Lake County? What can we tell them to do? What kind of itineraries can we give them? What kind of events can we put out there? And we see a lot more engagement with that. And so we've worked really hard with the agency, and we're pleased at where we are. Paid search is just that. These numbers were all down across the year because we didn't have as much money last year to buy paid search. And so it's just kind of a factor of, of, of how much money you've got. But almost a half a million impressions, 50, 46,000 clicks to our website from our search. And then our click-through rate is extremely good at 10, a little over 10%. Where they go, you can just, like, where are they going? What ad groups? You can see it's all about the outdoors. It's California places to go, camp, camping in California. Those are those keywords that once we find, once we lean into those, we continue to spend against those type of keywords. And then we work in these ad groups. And again, it's outdoor entertainment, vineyards, hikings, casinos, spas, weddings and events. And we find a lot of traffic coming from those top performing ad groups. Facebook, paid socials, Facebook and Instagram. We, again, we spend a lot against those. It is, you know, over 5.2 million impressions. We have, on the very far left side, we do this really cool carousel that we change every quarter. We take eight different properties and we feature eight different stakeholder properties. So we engage people with like, look at this cool place, look at this. And of course, we've been leaning really hard into Hotopia because they're new, they're cool, and it's something that we have exclusively. But we do, we do vacation rentals, we do Skylark Shores, we do Robinson Rancheria, we do, we do everybody. And then we, then we have some beautiful brand stuff. And then, yeah, we, we see a lot of engagement. And social media is, is very good for us, but we need, we need more assets, and we'll come to that later. Programmatic display banners. So these are banners that play. How do you say it? It's like Ken Burns, we don't have video. So we do things that are like, you know, we, we do pictures that move. And, and it's good, but it's kind of, kind of gotten a little tedious. So we're working on that, too. But this is really the top of that funnel where you build that, that big impression. You, you, you reach people about, and they, you reach people and they say, I've really, I've never heard of Lake County, or what's Lake County all about? And that's where you reach them, at the very top of the funnel, you create that interest. And next, we have our video performance. So we run a connected TV, which is, you know, really kind of, you know, super affordable for people like us or a place like us. We do great impressions. Again, this is about top of the funnel stuff where you really just want people to have like a favorable idea about Lake County after they seen your ad. And then programmatic, nope, programmatic display, oop, nope. Up, that's okay. Our partnerships. We have, we have some really strong partnerships. One of our biggest partnerships is with North of Ordinary, AKA the North Coast, Del Norte, Humboldt, Mendocino, and Lake County. We all put in $11,000 each. Visit California matches us for another $44,000. So that gives us $88,000 to go out and market. Basically, what we're trying to do is drive people to each one of our individual websites, and we really like to grab email addresses. So we do a lot of stuff around email and gathering those email people because they're really valuable readers for all of us. We attended with them a big show, or this is our USA Today contest, so we can, again, leverage something that we wouldn't be able to do on our own. We're on USA Today, we're doing it again this year. It garters a ton of email leads for us, folks. We, we really build our database, and the emails are really good emails. We, people do not unsubscribe the minute they sign up for it. We start hitting them. So we're really happy about that kind of giveaway. The Tallman Hotel jumps in and gives two-night stay. Twin Pine Casino jumps in and gives a two-night stay. So we've been able to, you know, engage people in different ways with this program. And then partnerships. One of the most valuable partnerships in the state of California is with Visit California itself, largest destination marketing organization in the world. We had a destination mixer last December. You can see I brought in some rock stars from Lake County, Larry, Karen, Joy from Shannon Family, Melinda from Peace and Plenty, and the uber rock star of all, Angela De Palma Dow from our lake. And she brought this, I mean, she brought our lake to life. We brought Lake County to life for a really important audience. We had 110 people, and we could tell them everything about Lake County in about 15 minutes that we had, that we wanted, and it was great. And from that came a lot of great earned media. So really important group. And then we continue to partner and fund the CTA program, a great program that helps in-county people, you know, know how to do better interfacing with our visiting public and our visitors to the county. So we continue to fund that program. The trade shows, another great partnership we have with the Wine Grape Association. They took out a big booth at the San Diego Food and Wine Festival, and they gave us just a spot in the booth. All I had to do was fly there and stay there. And the Tallman gave a two-night stay, so we were able to get a lot of new email leads and make a lot of amazing favorable impressions of people at this, at this food festival, Wine and Food Festival, which I have to say was probably the most beautiful thing I have ever been to. Wow, San Diego knows how to do it. Trade shows, we did attend the Visit California Forum, Outlook Forum last year in Sacramento. It was a great forum. That's where all of us get together, a lot of industry insight, a lot of sharing. They bring out some of the best professionals, they tell you all the latest trends, and, you know, those are the kind of things that we need to stay close to. We brought Trudy, who does some of our public relations, and we brought our account manager, who's been our account manager since, from the very beginning at Medium Giant, Amber, who does a great job for us. So trade shows, you guys remember this map, believe it or not. We, the map was in the middle of 2023, a fully paid map. It's kind of like, just gave, Band-Aids us over till we got to where we wanted to be today. Lot of distribution outside of the county, again, all of, all the visitor centers and Sonoma Airport, and then a lot of in-county. And best of all, fully ad-supported, folks. It, it didn't, it was paid for by advertising. And then next, we did some, we did great with public relations in '23, some earned media, earned media, stuff that you earn, you don't pay for it. And so we got a lot of, lot of pickup. People are, you know, they're talking about us, they're hearing about us, they're seeing about us, everything from M Magazine to the SF Gate to Travel and Leisure. These are great places for us to start showing up because other people then see that and then they start coming in. So earned media was really important in 2023. And as you know, we renewed the district in '23. You guys, we're here, we were in the chamber on February 7th. We have a brand-new district for 10 years, yes. So that's behind us, can't, can't say enough about that. So I want to do a little 2024 look ahead. Hey, I'm sure you guys have all seen our new magazine, Lake Life California. And 20,000 copies were just printed, 10,000 copies are out-of-county, they're at all the California visitor centers. So when somebody's in a California visitor center, right next to Napa and Sonoma, there's a beautiful magazine for Lake County. And we're also at the Charles Schultz Airport. So if you're over, ever getting your baggage at the Charles Schultz Airport, make sure you take a picture of it and send it to me. It's right there, it's not hard to find. And again, it's next to all of our, all of our neighboring counties. So it's important that we have that. Again, 100% fully ad-supported with some support, seed money from the county and both cities. We thank everybody for that because it got us all started, and we're, we're excited about the magazine. We've got it out for a year. Community involvement. I helped with economic development in the Chamber of Commerce on the Lake County Leadership Forum. We pulled a really good group together, a good group of people together, and you'll see we had Carolyn Bateta, CEO of Visit California, is our keynote speaker. Again, we need to raise our profile and stay in front of a very important audience at Visit California, and that was a great way to do it. New faces, Supervisor, Chair Brute Sabatier. We've got some new faces of Lake County you're going to start seeing this year. We just did our first shoot three weeks ago at all the wineries. And so we've got a bunch of new folks. We're shooting in about three more weeks in August on the lake and in Clear Lake State Park. So we're going to have a bunch of new assets, and they're really high-resolution video assets. The, the partnership with the Lake County Wine Grape Commission is huge. They hired Brown Barn Films out of Sebastopol to come up and shoot this. They're going to, we're going to co-own the video, but really no conflict there. They've got their own audiences and we've got ours. We're going to take all that footage and we're going to put that all into our asset bank and start making all of those commercials that you saw that we were running on, on connected TV and in, in social. And we'll have a whole new audience now and a whole new group of people to use. So we're really excited about that. And it was 100%, you know, it was, it was a great partnership. We, our attic pocket is, is, was nothing on the shoot. And so super excited about that. Public, so far, you guys were doing really well with earned media in 2024, lots of, lots of pickup, lots of stuff going on. I mean, it's almost so much that, I'm not going to say we can't keep up with it, but it's, it's a great, we're at a great place. People are writing about Lake County, and they're writing about like, you know, food, where do you go to, you know, foodie, a foodie's guide to Lake County. I mean, we're, we're, we're falling into these great spaces and these great little categories where people can, you know, think about coming up here, what would they do here? We had our podcast, of course, I'm sure most of you heard the podcast on Visit California. That podcast gets distributed to like 30 million people. It's a huge way to like reach, you know, that's the kind of reach we could never buy. So excited about that in the public relations space. And? Thank you. I'd love to take questions because I know that was a ton of data and a ton of stuff, but I figured.
I think you were pretty clear on the positives.
Yeah.
Your tone and your voice and your body language adds to the positiveness. So I appreciate your presentation today and the work that's been happening at the T I D and all around. Let's see if we have any comments or questions. Supervisor Green?
Just very briefly, it will be constructive criticism, but it will be criticism. I did appreciate looking at Visit California, the state website, in particular its privacy policy. When you are doing tourism, you are marketing both local people and potentially international visitors. And there are some things in there that I think the privacy policy on your website could benefit from, including some attention to GDPR appliance, compliance for European site visitors.
Got you.
I have shared some information internally because I think that's a concern I share with our website as well. So I just wanted to point that out. It is what it is, at least one is there, but it very much looks like a generic one-off, and I do think more attention is needed. And I think Visit California would be a good resource for you.
Okay.
Any other comments or questions? I appreciate you obviously hearing some of the constructive criticism of the past, hence you yelling my name today. Love to see the evolution.
Yeah.
The T I D has had a slow start. Now you have your 10 years, you have your legs beneath you. I can only imagine what's going to happen over the next few years, and I appreciate these annual reports. Appreciate seeing the increases, especially the T O T increases that we're seeing. That, those are all good signs. There is one thing that I, it's not a concern, but there's just, it doesn't match like mathematically. And I know that we've done a decent job, I don't know that we could ever be perfect at changing how we attack our T O T in the sense of Airbnbs, because they're kind of difficult to find and, and continuously capture the T O T tax that should be paid to the jurisdiction. I know the city of Clear Lake just jumped ship from H D L, and I think they're doing their own thing, and they actually saw a pretty decent increase in the number of Airbnbs. But knowing the amount of fish tournaments that occur within the city of Lakeport, that number from the beginning seems somewhat low, especially when I'm comparing it to, and great job at Middletown Rancheria, but when I'm comparing it to them, I'm like, how is it possible with all the fishing tournaments that occur? So I'm not sure if there's a push that the T I D can do to get all of us at the same level for our T O T and getting access to our Airbnbs and whatnot, because all of that counts for you.
Yeah.
And so just, just a thought, when I see the numbers, that I feel like it could be more. Granted, I'm glad we are where we are, but I think there, there's potentially some missed opportunities.
Yeah, I would completely agree. We just, I mean, just this week, we found two in Clear Lake that we shared with Alan that are definitely not registered. It is, yeah, I, I don't know. I mean, our, our two cities aren't very big contributors to the bottom line, we see that. But, yeah, I can't, I can't build hotels. There are, there are a lot of Airbnbs in, in, that are, that are non-compliant, and there, there are ways to approach that, but it gets pretty legal pretty quick. It's really, and I don't think it's complicated because we're not the only one that It's really, and I don't think it's complicated because we're not the only one that face it. A lot of other places, cities, counties face the same thing, and they require registration. And we could do that with Airbnb. We were, we could require that in order for Airbnb to place a listing on its site for the county of Lake, that they need to have a registration number, or the listing won't go live. But I mean, you're talking legal time now, you're talking.
And, and I know I just came back from a conference, and I forget if it was VRBO or Airbnb, but they were at the conference, and they, they talked about how they're working hand-in-hand now with individual counties, working on ordinances. So I, I have information to pass on to our property tax collector, just to see. And I know that Supervisor Paeska wants to comment on my statement.
Well, I just, initially, I, I know that our tax collector has brought this up to us recently, and it seems like things are constantly inflexed there, and so there's always opportunities to have those conversations with him.
Yep.
But what I really wanted to talk about or ask you, because we do have new projects, and this was something that we talked about at the TID often, and I, I just haven't been able to make all of the meetings like I used to, so I apologize for that. But that was a conversation before, is how do we grow revenue when we're not seeing new projects? And now that we have new projects, do you have projections of what this next year might look like with Hightopia being online and also Conacti Harbor? And are there any other projects coming that maybe the full board's not aware of?
Well, you, you would have known Get Away Home, that is scheduled to open 59 units down off of Morgan Valley Road in Lower Lake. We're only very, the first time because of the, you know, we, we haven't seen really any of the revenue from those new projects yet, because it just doesn't come in that quickly. So, and I've, I've asked Patrick, and you know, we, he also can't break it.
He's behind you.
He can't break it out. Can't break it out, like, okay, here's how much they paid. So I think we're going to get a better indication, but it's just going to take some time. But new product is without a doubt where we're going to, you know, we're going to do better. We, we have to have new places and new product for people to come and stay in Lake County. And, and, and I, you know, three is, three is good. I did hear, though, that it sounds like Conacti Harbor is going to close November through, I think, April.
So they're going to continue to be?
Yeah, so that's, that's, you know.
That's hard for fishing.
Yeah, it's not really good for, for, you know, trying to predict what revenue is going to happen there. But they're filling the place up when they've had these shows, they're, they're doing their stuff. So, you know, you just have to take it as, I know both, both cities are talking to prospective hotels, and you know, there's the project, there's the property out here and on the lake, but we don't have a lot of new stuff.
The fainting couch.
I've been to the fainting couch.
That new property in Cogs.
I did, and that is nice. It is off the charts.
Yep.
Yeah, I got the whole tour.
All right, well, maybe next year we'll be able to talk about some benchmarks after this summer's data is fully.
We'll have it.
Yeah, great.
Any further comments or questions? Supervisor Simon?
Last comment, yeah, appreciate the energy you bring on the reports, but we've come a long ways, and like I said, we're just up for another decade, so continue telling our story. You know, sometimes you'll get a negative article that goes out about the lake or something. I think you look at it from the standpoint, any publicity is good publicity. It's how do you spend that, how do you educate people? So telling our story. You know, when I, when we first talked about creating this TID and getting into this, you know, that's what it is. So I appreciate the work that's being done, the communication, the meetings, and we'll just keep growing it. So from a tribal standpoint, we completely support it, and make sure our dollars are spent, you know, in the right spot, and you guys are doing a great job of that. So greatly appreciate everything, and every customer that comes through would just continue to tell Lake County's story, because there's great eateries around the lake, opportunities, and we all know economic development and hotel development is something we just need to continue to push. Cities are looking at projects, tribes are looking at projects, the whole community. We've got plenty of places to go, we just need to continue that. And I like to see the graphics of looking for the camping, the cabins, those types of things, because we're developing those. And yeah, Hightopia is a very unique place. The day that project was presented in my district, I thought, what a great idea. So perfect thing, I appreciate the Six Sigma family bringing that to Lake County. Thank you.
Vice Chair Randall?
No, I was just going to highlight that a lot of the improvements that you've put out there, I've seen it grow exponentially, very good work. And I know that with the Airbnbs and whatnot, I, I thought I was doing something great, meeting with a couple of folks a couple of months back, but staff's already been on it and different departments already looking at what to do with that from here forward. So, yeah, I know that that should be something coming eventually here, this year or so, or maybe, yeah.
Okay. Did I cut you off from saying something?
No.
A quick question. I see you're on the Gram and Facebook, are you doing any other new social media? I know Discord is huge, I know that, and it's not necessarily social media, but it's where people are. And also TikTok, are you looking at any of those things?
We have TikTok as a channel, we just really don't have the assets for it.
Right.
You have to post on TikTok like five times a day almost to even find yourself anywhere. So we, we tried, and I think a lot of destinations, I know a lot of destinations, it comes up at every one of the conferences we go to, DMOs are struggling with TikTok just because of the sheer volume of it. So, and there's no paid option, like you can't really advertise on TikTok. So it really has to be organic, and you almost need like a, you need like a celebrity, somebody that, you know, can take it and be your personality.
And you need influencers.
Yeah. And influencers, we, we've done a lot with influencers. We're looking at a really cool influencer for this year that we're going to share with our North of Ordinary crew, that board meeting's next Friday, so we'll hope to hash something out there. But yeah, influence, and Visit California sent some influencers through, and that wasn't on our ticket at all. And we did, we got a lot of, lot of good earned media from those folks.
And I'd love to talk to you to see what kind of relationship maybe we can build between PEG TV and the TID to see how we can help one another, if that's a possibility.
Sure.
And also, I know when I go to outside hotels, there's kind of like a little preview of what's in the surrounding area that's already kind of on the loop in, on the TV. Is that something that you're looking into to help with the CTA by, by kind of creating the, here's what you can do since you're already here?
Right. Yeah, that's kind of what we're really relying on this in the rooms for, to be honest with you. I don't know what people's video capabilities would be at most of our stakeholders. I wouldn't think it'd be probably, it'd be, that would, they'd have to make an investment before we ever made the investment, would be my guess.
Okay. Just thinking out loud.
I like it, yeah.
But thank you for the work that you're doing. Obviously, it's not just generating funds for you, it's generating funds for us. So I think this is a win-win situation to continue the relationship.
Thanks, everybody.
Oh, wait, Supervisor Green?
Just one last minute, constructive criticism. Again, loved the presentation, wasn't posted with the agenda. Those tuning in online may not have been able to see it particularly well. Don't see an About Us page on your website. So I know you're definitely tourist-focused, and a TID is not the first thing they're looking for. But whether it's our website or yours, having some ability to post these reports would not just improve transparency while we're talking about it, but also give you some evergreen content that people can refer back to. So I'd be, I'd love to send people to the website now and say, just look at the PowerPoint. There's no place to send them, so.
Yeah, we, we do actually have, we have a, we have a, we have our own website, which is discoveryourlake.com, which is our trade site. And it's not posted there yet because I didn't, I hadn't given it, but it'll be posted there. Last year's is on there, it's Discover Your Lake. So we, we have to have an industry trades, we have to have a trade site.
For the TID?
Pardon?
For the TID.
Correct.
Okay. But you don't link out from this website at all?
You know, we really, you really don't want your consumers on your trade site. I mean, they can find it, it's not hard.
Well, maybe you don't, but maybe I do, so.
Oh, you could, yeah, but you don't, because there's a lot of, I mean, nobody does that in the industry, is what I can say. I mean, like, you can go to Mendo, you can go to SF Travel, they all have trade sites where, that's where they do their business, where we put our minutes, we put our, all of that stuff, because we're required to. And we do do that, and, but we're not required to put it on our website or link there. And nobody has, and I think it's just, I don't know that you really want to put your financials on your industries, I mean, you know how many phone calls I get?
You're going after the consumer, not the partner.
Already from people trying to sell me something.
Simple footer link.
Here's what our budget is.
A simple footer link or a sidebar link.
Yeah, no, and I agree with you, and there'd probably be no traffic to it, but it's just, it hasn't been an industry norm. Nobody's.
I mean, that, that would need board direction.
I, that, that, that sounds like that would be TID board direction.
Yeah.
Brian, Mr. Fisher, thank you very much for your report, fantastic job, keep up the good work.
Thanks, everybody, have a good one. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on to our 1:30 PM, 6:10 hearing, consideration of, I'd love to open public comment for anybody who may have just recently left the chamber. I see no one in the chamber, and we have Donna McWitt. Oh, sorry.
Was that for the last item?
Yes. You, you want to comment? Since I called on Donna, let's go ahead and start with Donna, but yes.
Thank you, Supervisor Spatier. Donna McWitt, Red Bud Audubon. A year available natural resource that needs highlighting is bird watching. Bird watching is a multi-billion with a B industry and one of the fastest-growing nature-based tourism sectors in the world. The spending contributes to local communities, adds to benefit biodiversity conservation, and each year over 45 million Americans take part in bird watching. Each year, those millions of bird watchers spend about $41 billion. We have over 350 species of birds. We're on this Pacific Flyway, and we're recognized as an international important bird area. Besides that, and this will be a plug for an oak protection ordinance, our forests are amazing, and they need highlighting. We have 2,300 species that are associated with oaks, and that doesn't include all the fungi or bacteria or microorganisms. And just in oaks alone, there's 38 bird species, and bryophytes and fungi and invertebrates and lichens and mammals that are dependent on our oaks. And our Lake County Land Trust properties are so amazing. Some people don't even know or haven't even been out to the Rodman Preserve. So Lake County's a beautiful place, and I just wanted to share what I thought. Oh, and in the Clear Lake Oak Keys, we have over 100 short-term animals like Bnbs, and I don't know how you monitor that. Thank you for letting me talk.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Sullivan?
While he's walking up, Donna actually was instrumental in arranging a BBC documentary to, about the Grebes, but the weather steered them somewhere else, but it was almost happening this February, yeah.
So, good afternoon, Patrick Sullivan, Treasure Tax Collector. Just going to add a little bit to the discussion about driving more revenue to TOT and the TID. In fall, it is our intention to go forward with an RFP for new software that can help identify short-term rentals. It's similar to what we had before, except there's a lot more options out there. So there are certainly unregistered listings again out there that are not reporting and not paying taxes. We did attempt to work with Verbo and Airbnb, try to see if we work on arrangement, but we really did not get any sort of engagement. The other issue that has come up with working with them is that many counties have not found Airbnb or other comparable companies to be the partner that was promised. They've begun not enforcing a lot of the agreements against property owners in the area, so people have been able to opt out of paying the required taxes to Airbnb, which, since Airbnb is part of the agreement, requires us to give up a large number of our rights, it's effectively made it, I would argue, impossible to proceed with them. So I think at this point, we're going to look at software and kind of go back down that path. My hope is that that software will also be made available to other departments, including code enforcement or others that could benefit from it, so it could help be part of a broader solution. So, thank you all.
And just as a quick suggestion, if it's possible to partner with both jurisdictions as well to capture as much of it as possible rather than just one, that would be great for that software.
Yeah, I think if City of Lakeport or City of Clear Lake wanted to, it'd probably be possible to join in. Usually paid by the listing, so theirs would be a very minimal cost, but I'm, I'm happy to run that by them when we get there. All right, thank you.
Thank you. And we do have, please come on up before I move on to Zoom.
Michael Wagner. I just wanted to chime in on something that had been said earlier about ecotourism, I think is what the term would be, and I didn't really see that buzz term in the presentation. And it would seem like it might be something that'd be helpful and useful, especially just given the day and age that we live in, the idea of ecotourism and the Lake County Land Trust, it's like right here at our fingertips, organizing some tours or something along those lines would seem like income generators and really focusing on the environment. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And the hand went down, and the Zoom room must be for the future item. Just as a response to that, I do know, I appreciate the, and I might have it wrong, but the idea of marketing Lake County was to say, this is an adventure. This is, I know it puts the country in wine country, it has great pictures of the outdoor activities that you can do. It might not say ecotourism, but it definitely shows what you can do and the beauty of the area and why you want to be here if you're going to be taking a vacation trip somewhere. So I think that they do a good job, it might not be the specific term that's being utilized, but I think it's the same basic concept of what's being used. And with that, I'm going to close public comment, and we will move on to, and we will take a six-minute break. We will come back at 2:15.
It's going to be a long one.
All right, let's go ahead and reconvene. This is our 1:30 PM item. Hearing, consideration of A, Appeal AB 2303 of Planning Commission's Decision to Revoke a Major Use Permit UP 19-15 for Legendary Farms at 2290 Soda Bay Road, Lakeport, APN 00801029 for High-Sensitivity Violations, and deem Justin Smith and Melissa Smith responsible persons. And B, Appeals AB 2302 Roberto Estrada and AB 2304 Michael Wagner of the Planning Commission's Decision to Deem These Persons as Responsible Persons for the High-S severity Violations at Legendary Farms UP 1915. Director Turner.
Thank you. Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. Last year, September 28th, the Planning Commission did uphold the recommendation to revoke the use permit 1915, as well as deem a number of persons responsible persons for the high severity violations that took place at that location. It's taken a while to coordinate. We did receive three appeals in a timely manner, and each of those appellantants also had legal representation. So we've gone through a period of trying to coordinate calendars. This was the first available date where everybody had it free on their calendar. The two appellantants did submit their documentation in a timely manner, consistent to the ordinance requiring a 96-hour notice for submission of documentation. And with those documents came requests for a continuance.
Okay. And the continuance, what does that date look like that was being offered or discussed?
This morning, the accepted next available date was September 17th at 9:30. But I think we did receive correspondence after that point, so we did recommend that the attorneys be present on Zoom to speak to the board regarding a good date.
Okay, and I do see that we have Emerald Law Group that's here. I'll just be blunt with what I would like to see, and I'm going to ask the board. This has been going on, so I believe the violations that were approved and upheld by the Planning Commission were from 2022.
Yes.
And that the Planning Commission was September 23rd, September 28th, 2023?
Yes.
And that we are now finding ourselves in July and being requested to continue to September. I just think that timeframe is too long. I want to get this off of your docket so you can focus on the other stuff. And I feel that we need to make a decision sooner. I'm okay with looking at a continuance, but not to continue it for an extra two months further on down the road and just kind of checking in with the board, what everyone's... If we can have consensus on that.
I think within 30 days, if that's possible.
Supervisor Green.
I think the request for continuous September is reasonable. Every Friday on the fourth floor, they do extended case management conferences because calendaring attorneys is difficult. I appreciate the concerns raised about the timeline here, but the very complexity of this proceeding, when it does occur, also argues for the longer continuance. Like it or not, we'll be hearing this case de novo, so we can say, good job, bad job, Planning Commission, but we're going to have to hear all the evidence. I'm aware, through the communication, through counsel, that their presentations will probably be lengthy in nature. And based on my own concerns and my review of the case to date, I expect I'm going to have some pretty detailed questions. So I want to make sure when we do that, have this hearing, everybody's ready to rock on the various substantive issues that will be raised on this appeal. To the extent that counsel must be present to adequately represent their clients, I think their request for a continuance is more than reasonable. And to the extent we would consider those and open it up, if they have any of the last-minute things they need to hash out live on Zoom regarding the calendaring, I think they'll be capable of addressing that.
Okay. So I heard from two board members. Just looking for...
Yeah, I would agree with the 30 days that's been proposed by another supervisor.
And I'm fine with...
I agree with Supervisor Green.
Okay. Let's go ahead and listen to Emerald Law Group, which I believe would be a representative of, I don't know if it's one or more of the appellantants. If you could please identify yourself and who it is that you are representing.
Good afternoon. This is Colleen Perkins with Emerald Law Group. Can you hear me?
We can hear you loud and clear.
Wonderful. Thank you. So I would note that I represent Roberto Estrada. He is the neighbor to where the violations were found. He was never given a notice of violation at the outset, and so he was unaware of this matter for the first whole year that this matter was pending. I would also note that sending the matter to the Planning Commission was improper. There's no allowance for that in the code section that governs these high severity violations. And so I think the county has a lot of problems that they need to clear up, and I think that's been evidenced in the communications that we've had with county council. I believe there was an idea to meet and confer prior to the next calling of this case to see if those procedural issues could be worked out. So I would like to put it off at least 60 days so that we can try and meet and confer with council to see if there's any viable path forward for this high severity violation, based on the procedural errors that have already occurred. As for the date of the 17th, I have a personal medical appointment that I have to attend. We've offered two other dates, which is September 24th and October 1st as available dates. And I've spoken with Mr. Rogaway about those dates, so I know that those dates would work as well. He offered those to the Planning Commission. So this is not an attempt to delay. I think this was equally... We did request the continuance, but the board had only set half an hour for this hearing, when the code clearly provides us ample opportunity to question witnesses and present our cases. And especially when you consider the outcome of this hearing, i.e. that people could lose the right to cultivate in Lake County for their entire lives. This is upsetting people's livelihoods, people's property values. It's a very high-stakes hearing. And so I think it was correct for Mariaa to agree to a continuance and for the board to allow this continuance, because I think there were procedural problems, and there was not... You had set it for a half-hour hearing, and we simply could not adequately represent our clients and exercise our rights to a full and fair hearing in a half-hour time period. So I would request that this matter get put over to September 24th or October 1st.
And as you can see, we are not necessarily bound, even though I'm sure my colleagues would like me to be bound to the timeframe of the agenda. Just because it says 30 minutes does not necessarily mean that we're going to cut everything off and make a decision within those 30 minutes. So I think that argument, we would... If you've watched our prior appeals, we want to make sure that people are heard and are given the time to speak up and express themselves and present their case.
That's wonderful, and on that basis, I would request a full day for this hearing.
A full day. Wow. So, right now, we have a bit of a mixed bag of votes on what direction to take. I'd like to see if we can maybe find a compromise. I would like this to come back before the end of August. That gives you a maximum of 45 days to be able to come back to us. That way, anytime between August 1st and the end of August, that's when I would like to see this coming back. I have very strong opinions on this matter from what I've read. I would be prepared today with the information that has been provided, both from looking at the Planning Commission and reviewing all the documentation that was provided to us for this. I came prepared today, but I also do want to respect, as we have in the past, to provide continuances so that we can come to a better understanding of what will be coming to us at the board level. But to continue at this moment in time, and I will presume that while in the appeal process, the activities on the property continued to go as originally approved by the Planning Commission in 2020 or 2021, when the use permit was provided, I want to make sure that we get to an end result and an end decision prior to too much timeframe going by and too much investment going into this year, in case that it results in a denial of the appeal. So I would like for the attorneys to meet with our county council and our Director Turner from Community Development, so that we can try to meet that timeframe.
Can I just state, this is Colleen Perkins again for Roberto Estrada. I have a pre-planned two-plus-week vacation in August, and I don't have a single day in August that is free. So I would just object to hearing this in August. I think September was the dates offered to us by Ms. Turner. She started with September 10th, and I think September is a more reasonable timeframe.
So I got a question for county council. There's a multitude of appeals here. Do we have to take all three together at once? Or is it kind of deliberating on the exact same matters of the facts of the case if we take them separately?
There may be some issues that may arise if it were to be taken separately.
Okay.
Because it does involve, I believe, the same set of properties and the same nexus of facts, however, I'll defer to Director Turner to see if she foresees any problems in trying to segment this out. One of which would be if your board decides on one recommendation for... Out of the three, and then takes up the other... Takes up or considers the other recommended actions at a later point in time, one potential question or issue might be, well, how, what if any, would, how would that affect the prior determination that your board would have issued by that time?
And I guess the way that I'm splitting up in my mind is a revocation, and then on the other side, there's the deemed, persons deemed responsible. Would that be possible to split it in that way? Or again, we're just reviewing the exact same case with the exact same evidence and just redoing the same process?
So again, I would defer to Director Turner to see what she anticipates as far as what's before your board. It appears from my initial review that it does involve the same set of facts and circumstances, so that, to your point, Mr. Chair, that there may be some duplication that, if, under that scenario, if it were to be segmented out.
I would be happy to split it into multiple staff memorandums and schedule it at the convenience of the board. One, the Planning Commission did take two separate actions. One was approving the revocation of the use permit 1915. The second action was deeming various persons responsible persons. Should the board desire, I would be happy to break it into those two sort of thematic units and schedule it at the convenience of the board supervisors.
Okay. Well, I appreciate your flexibility and being willing to split that. I'm not sure that that's the best decision to make, but I appreciate you making that offer. Supervisor Green.
Thank you, and I appreciate your, what I assume is an attempt toward efficiency, but also caution that if we don't do it right, when we finally get this done, it's probably going to add costs and create some inefficiency down the road. It's a complex case. This is a complex ordinance. There's going to be facial issues and issues as applied to the various properties, not the same as the premises, and the various people that have control and custody of those properties, which are not the same as the people who have custody and control of the licensed premises. I don't know of a practical way, based on my lay experience, to split this baby in half, and so I would very strongly recommend this board keep it all together. And, yeah, when they're represented by council, we have to make sure that we bend over backwards, make sure council is there available to represent them with all the tools available at their disposal. You know, we're not going to short ourselves. We shouldn't be shorting them either, so.
And I just want to remind you that, again, the appeals were originally submitted seven days after the decision of the Planning Commission, so that means by the end of September 2023, this has been in the works. And I would like to suggest that all tools have been allowed to be used in order to get to where we are today. I would like to see this come back within the month of August, as was the consensus of this board. And if there's a further request for continuation, we will obviously listen to that request, just like we did today. But I would like to see this get completed and people understand exactly what the decisions will be, rather than continuing to hang in limbo. Do we need a motion?
Did you hear a consensus that I didn't on the 30 days?
Yes, I believe there was Supervisor Simon, Supervisor Paeska, and myself, and that would be a majority of the board. County Council.
Yeah, so if your board determines to continue this hearing, it would be a motion to continue this public hearing to a date and time certain.
September 20... Oh, no, August 27th at 1:30 is available on the calendar.
And I'm okay with offering that as a suggested compromise. It's more than 30 days. Checking in with my colleagues.
I would agree with that date.
Okay. So let's open it up for public comment on the continuation of this item. I do see we still have Emerald Law with their hand up. Want to make sure to get to them first, and let's go through the Zoom. We'll get to you.
Yes, again, I think this is going to be a full-day hearing. We have numerous witnesses to present and lots of questions to ask and lots of evidence to go over, so I would request that any date it's set for, that the hearings start at 9:30 a.m.
Okay.
Thank you.
The notion of witnesses and so on, I know that typically we have public comment of people who are sworn in. I've never handled it. It sounds almost like you want to handle this like a court case, where you will be questioning witnesses. I'll... I think we need to work with county council to figure out what exactly is your knowledge of our public hearings, because I've never experienced that here, at least in the Board of Supervisors. Because I want to make sure you understand what you're walking into and what our process is, just as well as we understand our process, because I don't want to be set up for something that you can or cannot do.
Yes, I've thoroughly read Ordinance 3112. I confirm with Ms. Johnson that we do have the opportunity to question witnesses. Thank you.
Okay. I'm getting a look, but I think that I'll ask county council to make sure to connect with the individual representatives of the appellantants, so that they're aware of what the process is. That would be great, if we could do that. Then I have a hand from Joe Rogaway.
Yeah, hi, good afternoon. This is Joe Rogaway. My request is to set this beyond the 30 days for a variety of reasons. This is a complex legal matter, as the board knows. So far, it appears that the county has proceeded in excess of the authorities granted under the relevant chapter and has been using the wrong chapter for these proceedings, and that's why this has gone to Planning Commission. So there's likely going to be... that's why this has gone to Planning Commission. So there's likely going to be some issues with respect to whether or not this board can even hear an appeal from Planning Commission that was sitting ultra vires, which is to say outside of its legal authority. So my request is for this to be reset no earlier than 60 days from today's date, for the date that it is reset to be a full-day hearing, and for the county to provide a memorandum to the parties and its council as to the county's belief as to which process to follow with respect to the hearing procedure.
Okay. I appreciate your request, but as you've heard, we have made the decision to give you a maximum of 45 days. We are setting it hopefully with a motion coming soon for August 27th. And I would definitely, again, reiterate to reach out to our County Council and make sure that we all understand the same process that we're going to walk into. And we will see where we are in August, on August 27th, if that is the motion that is made. So thank you very much for your comment. Let's go ahead and move on to the chambers. Let's start with Joan.
I'm just publicly-
No, 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 no. You can come to the microphone if you're going to speak.
Originally, this was on schedule for 1:30. It is now almost 3:00. People who want to learn about this need to be able to come and count on it happening. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan.
I think you should continue it. And I don't think you should ham and ha. You should have it the time you say it's going to be.
I will do a better job of leading the meetings in the future, Joan. Thank you.
Michael Wagner, appellate to this action case, whatever it's called. I think for all of us, we're into some kind of uncharted territories, and we're all trying to figure out what and why and how this all works without taking my attorney's job. I think pointing out that the ramifications of your guys' decisions will affect everybody on that piece of paper for the rest of their lives, and not just in Lake County, but across the board. You know, DCC, you will have to register, and they will likely deny any license to anybody who's had it revoked. It's, you know, to your point, Bruno, the amount of time that has passed by, that is, I think that's on both sides of this table. Everybody's been trying to figure out what works for each other. One, one date works for one person, one date doesn't work for the other. In the interest of seeing justice done, the amount of time that's requested is a difference of about 15 days. And with that, I ask for your consideration and understanding in the situation that everybody's in as a group. That being said, thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And I think that we all take our role in ensuring a fair and just decision is the outcome of any of the hearings that we have. So I appreciate it, and I can understand your position as well. Any other comments in the board chambers? All right. I am going to go back to Zoom, Joe Rogoway. I don't know if your hand is still up, or if you wanted to say something else. If it's something else, please be brief.
Yes, I apologize. I just want to make sure to lodge my objection on behalf of my clients to the board's setting of this matter, as the board has discussed herein, for the reasons stated in my letter that's been provided to the board.
All right. Thank you very much. Bringing them back to the board and seeing if the board wishes to take action for continuation. I believe what was offered was August 27th at 1:30 p.m. Is that correct?
Yeah. I'd like the motion to move this to August 27th, 1:30 p.m.
Second?
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose?
Nay.
Motion carries. Please make sure to communicate with staff so that we can try our best to come prepared on August 27th. And thank you, staff. Yes, we're going to take our 11:30 a.m. item. Glad Joan isn't here to know that we're going backwards to 11:30 at this moment in time. Consideration of debt management policies and actions. A, rescind prior fund balance policy and approve fund balance, general reserve, and debt management policy. B, approve Lake County Debt Advisory Committee policy. C, consideration of two options for financing the Armory repurposing project, Lake County Sheriff's Headquarters, and direction to staff as appropriate. D, direction to staff to bring back final bond issuance agreement for approval. E, authorize the county administrative officer to sign all applicable documents prior to the final bond issuance agreement. And we have a whole host of admin staff, tax collector, and auditor controller, as well as K&amp;N. And I'll start it off with Mr. Carter. You got my chair. Mine doesn't do that anymore.
Good afternoon, board. Good afternoon, board. Before I go too far into it, I wanted to make sure that your board is aware that these policies and everything that's gone, has gone into this item has been multiple meetings with the auditor's office, treasurer's tax collectors' office, and administration. So this isn't just one department. So before your board today is mainly two policies. One, that is the fund balance, general reserve, and debt management policy, and the second one being the Lake County Debt Advisory Committee policy. And then your decision on those two policies, then we would go into the debt conversation. So on the fund balance, general reserve, and debt management policy, if, I'll go into a brief overview of it. On the fund balance piece, if the actual fund balance available is greater than estimated, so at June, if we, your board allowed, let's say 10 million above as FBA, if at final budget there ends up being 15 million, that 15 million would be under this policy, where A would be debt service payments, so that would be our first look. Second look would be if there's any pension and other post-employment benefit issues, which doesn't happen very often. Unmet building and maintenance needs. We have a reserve of a little over 8 million for that right now, but this is, no matter what happens in the scenarios. Option D would be one-time expenditures, so cars, those kind of things, capital assets. And then E would be startup expenditures for new programs. So that covers the gamut of almost everything that comes with one-time or extraordinary, during the budget process, what we call the extraordinary list. That'd be cars and things that are above net county cost. This deals with the general fund. It does not deal with non-general fund departments. And the county administrative officer, assistant county administrative officer, and auditor controller would be authorized to assign fund balance in accordance to the board's directives. That's what happens already. Just now would be in a policy specific. Moving on to the general reserve policy, as your board is aware, maintenance of a general reserve protects the fiscal solvency of the County of Lake. And every year during the recommended and final budget, I don't use the exact words that are in the policy, but originally I did, where it is government financial officers of America's best practice, after a risk assessment, that our county would have between 17% and 25% in our general reserves. This is the general reserves. This does not include the, we'll call standard reserves, where it's parks or the building infrastructure. This is the general reserves where it is very much restricted. And we are requesting in the policy to basically memorialize it to 17% to 25%. And then moving on to the debt management piece, the County of Lake debt management policy contains many elements that are very much pursuant to state law, purpose for which the debt proceeds may be used, types of debt that may be issued, relationship of the debt to the integration with the county capital improvement plan or budget, as applicable. You can read the rest. I don't need to list them all out. But that, that was a template provided from K&amp;N, our advisor and our contractor, and Bobby here is from K&amp;N. Did your board have any questions on that policy before I move on to the second policy?
Before we move on, Bobby, I know I've seen you here since this morning. I appreciate your patience. I was not aware that you were here specifically for this item, so I apologize that it had been moved, but thank you so much for your patience. Are there any questions, comments about the policy as summarized? So I do have some questions before I bring up my concern and what I would like to see added. I'm in the policy goal related to planning goals and objectives, and it kind of speaks to, I think it's within the debt policy. It speaks to 20% of the overall portfolio. I know you probably have it defined further on down. No, it's not there. What exactly do you mean portfolio? Our investment portfolio? Our general fund budget total?
Good afternoon, Chair Savadier. Bobby Chung from K&amp;N Public Finance. The 20% limit is meant to be, is meant to set a limit on the amount of variable rate debt as a percentage of the county's debt portfolio. I don't believe the county has any debt outstanding right now, so we certainly can clarify that to say 20% of the county's debt portfolio.
Okay. That helps out to better understand that part. So I know that debt is always a difficult task, and I guess I have a question to County Council. I know we're not talking about the committee or however it is that it would come to the Board of Supervisors to approve some sort of debt service. Does that require a four-fifths vote, or is it a majority vote only?
Just for clarification, would that be the formation of the committee?
No. The approval of debt service, like borrowing, or doing a bond, or whatever the case might be. Does that require a four-fifths vote, or just a simple majority?
It may. I have to look into it further. I know that for specific types of transactions that are related to debt service may require a four-fifths vote. So it may depend on the type of transaction.
And, I'm sorry, I cut you off.
So in terms of just a general authorization for, or granting of authority, or delegation of authority for general debt, or to conduct these kinds of transactions, not necessarily the specific ones, that may not require a four-fifths vote. But again, I have to look into that further.
And maybe my question is actually unnecessary. I would like to see a requirement of four-fifths vote, just because going into debt, whether it's a bond or whether it's a loan, I think is an important decision to be made, as important as approving a budget. And so I would love to see a higher threshold than just a simple majority, whether or not state law requires that it be four-fifths. But if there's ever a type of loan or debt service that we do that doesn't require it, I'd like to make sure we have that higher threshold, just because I, I, those things are important, makes me nervous, and I think that having the higher threshold would be better. So that's something, at least for my colleagues and I, to discuss, that I would like to see there. The other part is, I know in speaking with Mr. Carter, it seems to be a potential plan, but I think that a plan is only a personal plan until we're not here to continue those plans. And if we've set it in text and into policy, then it's something that has to happen. Granted, any of us can change the policy at one point when we bring it back to the board. But I feel like there could be a mixture of doing some sort of debt service and incorporating a investment policy to go along with that debt service. So for example, if we're going to borrow $10 million, that we set aside 5% of that into a reserve that we do not touch, that collects interest through our investment portfolio to help pay off and add more revenue to create a more comfortable safety measure. Because right now, we don't have that policy. And I, if I know I'm making money and I can use that money to pay off some of the debt, then that makes me a whole lot more comfortable than if I'm just doing something that we need to do, like, for example, we're going to talk about the sheriff's office and the armory. We need to do it, but the benefits and revenues aren't seen outside of, yeah, if we have our police force and helping reduce crime, then we should be able to see some investment in our communities, and that should increase our revenues. But those are indirect. If we know we have direct revenues coming from our policy to help sustain the potential blow of an economic downfall, I don't know. I just, I'm looking for safety measures that I'm not seeing in there. As I was told by Mr. Carter, that was a conversation, and potentially something that would be brought to us on a one-by-one. But I would like to see it in the policy so that it is for sure going to happen, no matter if we're here, if staff is here, so on and so forth. And those are the two things that I'd like to bring up. And I'm looking at the 8% of the general fund. And I don't know if that number is right or wrong, but I know that that concerns me as well. But I'll leave it at that.
Just, I think we'll both probably, or a few of us might respond to some of that. I just wanted you to know that we've definitely discussed that. That is part of the FBA section saying that any debt service payment is the top priority with any excess FBA. There are other things Bobby will go over where we can build in that reserve. And so having the payment available in a reserve is something that is on the top of our list. So it's great that you're bringing that up. And Bobby's going to tell you more about it.
Thank you. Yeah, we could, we have the flexibility to build in a, what's called a debt service reserve fund, which is basically one year's worth of debt service when incurring the borrowing, if that should be the board's decision. And you could fund that through either cash on hand, or you could fund that from the proceeds of the borrowing itself. And that money would reside at a bond trustee and be for the benefit of, you know, making a payment in the, in the event that there's financial stress at the county. Not that that would ever happen.
So it wouldn't be held by the county. Now, going back to what you were talking about, how would we write that into this policy? Basically, if, not just talking about the current project we're talking about, but if another one down the road comes in that we, supervisor Spatia is wanting to force?
And maybe before we talk about that, I'd love to hear from my colleagues, because if, if my colleagues don't want to implement that, then there's no reason to look at where and how. So I'd love to hear from my colleagues on some of the items that I brought up.
All right, I guess I'll go first. Let's start with the four-fifths vote. I know you asked Lloyd. Lloyd said he needed to do some more work, but as far as getting over the threshold, I know borrowing funds for the county, this is a new conversation. I've brought it up a lot of times. Like, why aren't we using some opportunities that we haven't as a county? So I don't agree with the four-fifths votes, if it's not required to put it in the policy. And it sounds like the conversations are already happening with staff, you know, looking at that, making sure that we're protected, anything would be brought to the board, protecting the county and the finances as we're moving forward. I don't support putting it in the policy at this point. Ultimately, if the board decides to do that, then that's the way we're going. But I think as we move through this process, I know we're going to be talking about a project after this, a certain one. So those are my thoughts on it at this point. I think there's enough safeguards and enough individuals that we trust to move us in the right direction. So those are my thoughts.
All right. Thank you. Any other comments?
I think I addressed the two major ones.
Those are the two ones. Thank you. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, I'm going to join my colleague. I'm opposed at this time to imposing any four-fifths requirement. I would support referring, because not all debt vehicles are created equal. So it's the dollar amount that may say, oh, we need four-fifths, or maybe the type of debt vehicle. But we are going to have a spanking new debt advisory committee that would be highly qualified to analyze not just the types of debt service being proposed, but any applicable wiggle room under the government code that would allow the Board of Supervisors to implement that type of restriction. But I don't, it seems premature to me at this point. I have a little more comfort with debt service from the city side, so.
And just real quick, as a remark, I appreciate your- And just real quick, as a remark, I appreciate your high marks of the individuals that are sitting in front of us, but I'm looking at other counties around us, and that's not always the case as future elections occur. And I'm just looking for safety measures, no matter who is sitting in those seats, because it's not about you and I, it's about the position themselves. So that's why I bring it up.
I would just like to highlight in their defense, they're the only ones who gave me a PowerPoint with the agenda items. So right there, they are stars, they are rock stars in my mind, and thank you.
Just in case you can't see it, it's in our point, I even have it printed for you.
Any other comments?
I'm fine with the way it is. I don't think we need four fifths. And I think if we do need, yeah. What's going on? Sorry. I'll repeat. I'm fine with staying as is right now if we don't need to. But I do know that if there is a situation like you're talking about with, you know, the other counties and the funding when it comes to the state and whatnot, I think that's what you're kind of referring to, it makes you nervous. Yeah, so for me, I do understand that, and there may be a time where we have to go that route. But right now, I think just to move forward, I think we're okay.
Okay. Did you want to say anything, or? We already have a consensus of no, so.
Yeah, I know there's a consensus. But I do agree with the four-fifths vote, because it is in line with our financial decisions. But we're in the minority, so that's fine.
Supervisor Green?
I have a quick follow-up question. It just went away, I'm sorry.
Shall we come back to you?
Yes, fuzziness just happened, sorry.
No worries, no worries. Are there any other comments or questions regarding the policies as described? Yeah, and yeah, I could just give you time.
And the staff. I know one of the motivating forces between bringing this forward is we do have an armory project that's going to take some creativity to get. But we also have a 10-year road maintenance plan with only five years of funding, and I know there may be some enterprise funds, and so the fact we don't have 10 years' worth of roads in there right now may be okay under our current regime. I just want to make sure that we're not so armory-focused, that this body or your debt advisory committee won't be open to looking at debt service for other pressing county needs that have already been identified.
That actually would be the point of the debt advisory committee, is to meet with all of those departments. And I've already talked with Genevieve and Patrick about meeting with the public works director about exactly, we're talking about the 10-year plan.
Thank you.
And I'm thinking more about the roads as well, the plan and whatnot. You know, that's something that's always stated in every meeting that I go to. I could say, hey, we just, you know, passed this thing called Copter, fix my roads. I mean, really, so I mean, if there's a way we can get to that, you know, I'd like to do so. So I mean, in the meantime.
So I got a quick question for you, just.
They do say that, didn't they?
I got a quick question for you about the 8%, and I'm trying to find it again. I lost it.
It's in B, under the county shall comply with the following goals.
I couldn't find it, B. Yes, so the county shall strive to have general fund lease debt service be less than 8% of general fund expenditures. Can you just tell me what I'm, what I should understand from that? All general funds, all expenditures, we can only do a bond or debt service for no more than 8% total?
I would actually turn to the expert on that one.
Yeah, Chair Spatia, that places a limit of no more than 8% of general fund expenditures to be spent on debt service.
Oh, to be spent on?
The payment.
Yeah, the payment.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, so it's a cap.
Think about that on our overall general fund. $100 million right now, that's quite high. I would not.
I'll just read.
That would be crazy if we went for $100 million. I'm glad we're not talking about that today.
And I would just add that there's no magic to that number. It's a figure that some of your peers have adopted to give themselves flexibility to issue debt in the future.
Okay. And so I just did a quick calculation. The last actuals that I have, based on the numbers from prior budgets that have been provided to us with actuals, is our general fund appropriations or expenditures were about $61 million, $62 million, and 8% of that is $5 million. Paying $5 million per year seems a little high, in my opinion, in the type of debt service that I would feel comfortable with, and that's a very high number. I would like to utilize, and again, if my colleagues agree with me, the armory to look at what would that cost be on a per year, and maybe bring that 8% a little bit closer to that, so that it doesn't knock it out. But it also, because that's a lot of money to anticipate and hold even in a reserve, if we do the 1 year's worth, that's $5 million we have to find to be able to put in reserve, if that's the process we choose to go, and that just seems a little bit high.
That does seem high at this point in time, but you're just talking about one project, and that would mean that if you brought that number down, there would be no debt services for roads or anything other possible projects until it's paid off. So that's where it's supposed to give you some leeway. And remember, each time we would go out for debt servicing, we would have to bring it to your board, and your board makes a final decision on which level to take and what the payment is. So if we were saying, oh, go for it and $5 million right now every year, that would not be the goal. This has to give you a little leeway for a future as well.
But it's 8% of appropriations, our appropriations go up, the percentage amount goes up. $5 million is kind of your foundation of where you start. We anticipate our general funds to grow and our appropriations to grow as well.
That's the max, not the goal.
Well, it is the max.
And so we can, I mean, we can adjust that, but just knowing that that's not the goal. And also, when we're talking $5 million, and Bobby's going to present later, the armory project is nowhere near that. So it would make more sense when we were talking.
And all of my comments are based on safety precautions for future boards, future staff. Again, granted, anybody can bring this policy and look to make an amendment to it, but it's a process, right? And so I just, it makes me a little nervous. Just wanted to bring it up.
One point that I was going to raise as well is that a lot of these policies are geared towards the fact that the county has to go through a credit rating process. And so I think there's some danger in artificially restricting us too much, and I don't know, Bobby, if you agree with that or not. But if we, if we put in too many restrictions, it can complicate our ratings review sort of needlessly, when we still, your board always has the option, you always have the ability to review anything that comes before you at that time and raise those concerns. I just am concerned about restricting us artificially within the policy itself, so.
And on the other hand, I'm concerned about if we don't have the ability to pay off, then that also affects our credit rating as well. And so just trying to find my happy comfort. But happy to move on if there's no further comments or questions from board members. And let's, we're going to take it one item at a time. I'm going to open it up for public comment right now, and then maybe even take action on each individual one. Does that work for you, Mr. Carter?
I would prefer that, considering if A and B don't happen, then C is not.
All right, let's go ahead and open up for public comment. I see no one in the room, and no one in the Zoom room either. So I'll bring it back to the board for action on this policy document before us.
So we're rescinding then approving?
Yeah.
Okay, Ms. Chair, I move to rescind prior fund balance policy and approve the fund balance, general reserve, and debt management policy. Does that work? Or no, I went too far?
No, I think that's.
Second.
It's true. That was confusing.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Nay. Moving on to B, approve.
Oh, whoops, we didn't go.
Approve Lake County Debt Advisory Committee Policy. Mr. Carter?
So this is the policy that would create the Debt Advisory Committee. The DSC would meet periodically to consider all county public financing proposals, so we happen to have one now, which is bringing it to the forefront. But if any other department wishes to explore that, we would meet, but meet no less than twice a year. The function would be, shall review all debt financing in the mount required to be approved by the County Board of Supervisors, initiated by a county department head or component unit, and make a recommendation as set forth in this, in the document. The composition of the DAC would be, according to this policy, would be the county ministry of officer or their alternate, auditor controllers or their alternate, and the treasure tax collector or their alternate. I don't actually have much more to say about this policy.
Okay. Anyone have any comments or questions regarding this policy? I see none. I do have one request. I would like to make sure that we have, like, meeting notes available so that we have transparency to what is happening in those meetings, and that even if there's a denial by the DAC, that that comes at least as a, maybe a consent agenda just for filing, not for any action to be taken. But I think it's important that the board is aware of what has come to the DAC and maybe why certain decisions were made, whether yes or no. I'm not asking for a, sorry, Matthew, a Matthew Rothstein-type of meeting minutes, but also I don't want just, I'm thinking not just action items, at least give us a brief summary of what was brought, why it was denied, or things of the kind, and looking for my colleagues to see if they agree with that level of transparency. I have one nod.
Yeah, I agree with that.
Okay.
I think it's already in there. DSC will record its recommendations. I'm at the bottom of page two.
I thought that was only if it came to us.
Well, even if they decide not to, that's a decision. So I think it's already baked in, I don't think you need consensus. And it's kind of a rolling one, so instead of a periodic random update to the board, looks like we would.
There's a report.
Hear DOC reports in any, any item coming forward with a capital funding request that would.
Maybe that's why everyone was nodding, because it was already there. You and I had a discussion about this.
Yeah, I apologize for that.
We would want to do it even if it wasn't.
My bad, my bad. Apologize, but glad that it's in there, because I think it's important. So thank you for already having it in there. Okay, that was my only request for this, and no other further comments or questions. And so let's go ahead and open it up for public. Anyone wish to speak on this item? I see nobody in the Zoom room, and no one getting up in the chamber. Bring it back to the board for action.
Go ahead.
Move to approve the Lake County Debt Advisory Committee Policy.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, board. Oh, are you gonna?
We are moving on to two options.
So next up, well, we're going to have two presentations for your board, one by Bobby from KNN, our advisor, and actually one from the treasure tax collector, Patrick, related to debt. And I'm going to hand out the slides, so you can see it in front of you.
If it was any later, you'd have to send it again.
Okay, good afternoon, members of the board. Should I wait until the materials are?
No, go ahead and start. We already have this in our attachments, so.
Very good.
Shouldn't be the first time we see it.
Very good. Again, Bobby Chung from KNN Public Finance. I am very happy to be here this afternoon to talk about this project and a couple of options. This first slide, well, my presentation is eight slides, and, you know, feel free to stop me at any point. It's better if this is a conversation anyway. This first slide is just a summary of who I am and my role in this process. I am a registered municipal advisor. We are registered with the SEC and the Municipal Securities Rulemaking Board. And my role is to help public agencies navigate through the process of evaluating debt financing options. And if you so choose to pursue a debt financing, to help make sure that that financing is executed in a prudent and, you know, responsible way. You know, the SEC some time ago assigned a fiduciary duty to us as municipal advisors, so by law, I have to put the county's interests ahead of my own. And, you know, just a bit of background, KNN works with over 30 California counties, and I've been with the firm for over 23 years, kind of specializing in California counties. This is the first time I've spoken before your board, so.
With our track record, this is our first time talking about this.
Not surprising that I have not been here before. This second slide is an overview of the, of the project as we understand it. It's a great opportunity for the county to, you know, renovate an existing armory facility that the state has passed on. We understand that the estimated project cost for this renovation is about $21 million, and that the county could, you know, utilize certain federal stimulus funds for this project if the construction contract is entered into or obligated this calendar year. So there is a bit of urgency to this. And so the county, you know, basically has, has two options, right? You could pay cash for the project, or you could borrow for some or all of the cost of the project through a tool known as a tax-exempt lease financing. And I'm going to talk a little bit more about what a tax-exempt lease financing is. Whenever a public agency, you know, desires to borrow money, you have to find the right mechanism that's permitted in the California Constitution. And one of the tools that is available to counties and cities and such is this lease financing mechanism known as a certificate of participation or a lease revenue bond. It is a form of a municipal debt that is very commonly utilized by cities and counties. It is a general fund credit. So the county is committing to annually budget and appropriate for lease payments for whatever term of borrowing you incur, whether it be 20, 25, 30 years, or 10 years. This type of borrowing requires a pledge of a piece of real property to serve as the asset for this lease financing. And that piece of real property could either be, you know, the sheriff facility or the armory itself, or it could be another piece of unencumbered property that is owned by the county. And most importantly, the county has the ability to issue tax-exempt obligations, which means that the investor who loans you their money for this project doesn't have to pay income taxes on the interest that they receive. So they're able to loan you money at a rate that is lower than what, like, a private corporation could borrow money at. So that's a real benefit for public agencies, and it's a tool that you have. So why would you do this, right? Instead of paying cash? You know, the, one idea is that, you know, you spread the cost of the project over the useful life of the asset, whether it be 20, 25, or 30 years. And, you know, kind of, you have the generation of folks utilizing the facility to actually pay for the facility over time. There's the potential to achieve savings when the cost of the borrowing is less than the inflation rate of construction, or less than what you could possibly earn on that cash in an alternate. on the, on that cash in, in an alternate investment. And I know that your treasurer is going to talk to that effect after me. And finally, you know, you could preserve cash for reserves or other, you know, emergency, unseen purposes. And finally, purpose, you know, the proceeds for, from this type of borrowing can only be used on capital projects. So, admin centers, jails, parking lots, sheriff facilities, not working capital. And it could be issued to refinance existing COPs or lease revenue bonds, of which the county does not have any. Let me pause there, see if there are any questions. This is a pretty common tool, but a complex one.
Looks like there's no questions at this moment. Please keep going.
Thank you. The next two pages summarizes six financing options. The first page summarizes the scenarios one, two, and three. And these scenarios assume that that $21 million project cost is offset by a $4 million cash contribution directly from the county. So, you're not borrowing enough money to fund 21 million. You're basically borrowing $17 million plus the cost of issuance.
So, can I, you want a discussion, so I'm going to jump in real quick. Is the $4 million part of the principal?
It reduces the principal amount.
Okay, reduces the principal, okay.
Yeah, so you'll see the next set of scenarios, which only has a $1 million cash, county cash contribution, the county would be borrowing more principal. Scenario, so the difference between these scenarios are, is the financing term. So, scenario one is 20 years, scenario two is 25 years, scenario three is 30 years. The estimated true interest cost is the blended borrowing rate based upon what we're seeing in the market today and, and estimate of what the county's credit rating could be. So, it ranges from 4.13% to 4.52%. The idea being, if you borrow money for a longer period of time, you have to compensate the investor with a higher interest rate. And I'm actually going to skip to the, to the last row here, the total net payments. These highlighted numbers are the total principal and interest that the county would have to pay if the bonds are, are outstanding for the entire period of, of time, so the 20, 25, and 30 years. As you can see, there's a lot more interest that the county would have to pay if you borrow for 30 years. All of these scenarios, though, include what's known as a 10-year optional par call. So, after a period of 10 years, the county has the flexibility to pay off all of the remaining principal with no prepayment penalty. And so, basically, the, this middle set of boxes looks at what the county would pay in principal during the first 10 years, in interest during the first 10 years, and then just the remaining principal at the end of the 10-year period. So, you know, if the county had that amount of cash, and you, you desired to pay off your bonds at that time, you would, of course, save all of the interest cost that the county would incur if, if, if the bonds were just remained outstanding to maturity. So, we thought that was a, a particularly important point to, to emphasize. You could pay it off with cash, or if interest rates are lower in 10 years, you could also refinance it at a lower interest rate and reduce your annual payments. But right here, right in the middle, you see the average annual payments ranges from about 1.5 million to 1.2 million. So, the longer you borrow money for, the lower your annual payments, but the more interest you pay throughout the life of borrowing.
Okay. Please jump in if you have a question.
Very briefly, I know we're going to cover this on page 11, or 13, I'm sorry, the assumptions. We're an unrated county. I could tell you guys, go get on Credit Karma or something, but one of the biggest assumptions on the list of assumptions is that we would somehow land an A rating. That seems optimistic. Or is that a fair assumption?
You know, not being a rating analyst, I, I think that's a fair assumption, right? I work with a lot of California counties, and I took a look at, at your financials. One of the large rating agencies, Standard and Poor's, is pretty, it's pretty open with their criteria, and about one-third of their criteria is finances, fund balance, budgetary performance. And, and I think the county's fund balance and budgetary performance figures have been fairly strong in the last couple of years. Another third of the rating is the economy, and so, you know, that kind of is what it is. And the remaining third is, is financial management, which is why we're bringing before you debt policies, fund balance policies. That's, that's an entire one-third of your rating. So, I don't know, right? I, I think that's, I think that's probably a conservative and realistic assumption. We would hope to do better. Part of our job is to advocate on the county's behalf to, to get a highest possible credit rating. So, I'm not sure if that answered the question. Okay. The second page assumes only a, well, it assumes a $1 million cash contribution, so all of these figures are slightly higher, right? The payments are higher, the total debt service figures are higher. We don't think that a difference in borrowing amount of $3 million would impact your borrowing cost, your interest rate, so the interest rate assumption is the same. On the next slide, should your board decide to move forward, since the county has not borrowed money in, in at least the recent past, it is a bit of a, an effort to do so. You know, it's like a, a four-to-five-month process from start to finish. Right now, you know, we're doing the, developing the financing plan. That's all of the scenarios, and should we get feedback from staff or the board, we would continue that throughout the process. You know, part of this process is obtaining the credit rating, it's developing a disclosure document. So, when you sell bonds, you have to market the bonds to potential investors. That is, you know, that does require some staff time to do. We would help you bar, you know, procure a bond council and a disclosure council, which are external law firms who provide certain advice and opinions that are specific to this type of security and, and process. But yeah, that's why we're, we're before you now. If, if there is some urgency to this, it is a four-to-five-month process from start to finish. This next slide is just an illustration of where interest rates are relative to where it's been in the past 24 years. This is a graph of the, of a 20-year tax-exempt double-A borrowing rate. So, right now, we're just shy of 4%, and it's right around the historical average. So, I wouldn't say that interest rates are particularly high right now from a historical perspective, and I wouldn't say that they're particularly low either. They were low a couple of years ago, but that boat has sailed. The ship has sailed. Excuse me. Okay. Finally, next steps, should your board decide to move forward, you know, we, we would help you procure bond and disclosure council through an RFP process, finalize the method of sale. There are a couple of different ways to sell bonds. You could do it either through a competitive method of sale, you could do it through a negotiated method of sale. We would help, help you determine which, which method is, you know, appropriate. Then, we would have a kickoff meeting, we would work on identifying which asset for the, for the, for the COP structure, and then target completing this before the end of the calendar year. And all of this would come back to your board for the actual approval before, you know, any debt is incurred. The remaining part of the presentation is a, is a detailed sources and uses for each one of the six scenarios. So, you could see, you know, the particular line items, financing assumptions on page 12, the cost of issuance, what you would have to pay an underwriter, and the true interest cost and, and credit rating, as Supervisor Green pointed out. And the last slide is, is just a little bit more detail about the lease financing structure. So, I'll pause there and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the presentation. Any comments or questions from board members?
So, I do have a, a quick question. I only know what I know, but still going to ask some questions. With the potential for rate cuts coming up in the near future, I know there, it's been discussed, has not happened, now being redisgussed, who knows if it will happen, but it's still a potential projection of what will occur. And I think now they're talking about three separate cuts in the near future, possibly by the end of the year. How does that impact? Because you're, you, you said something that is, sounds good, but at the same time, yes, we might be at the average, but we just missed historical lows by two years, right? And so, what does the decrease in the rate cuts do to the potential future rates? Because even 1% on $20 million can be quite a huge difference in what's paid back. If it's 0.1%, maybe the difference isn't, it's negligible, but what, what, what kind of changes do you see might impact that?
Well, that's a good question, Supervisor. This is where I pull out my crystal ball. You, you are correct. The market is anticipating that the, the Federal Open Markets Committee will reduce their target for the federal funds rate at least twice by the end of the calendar year. And, and I think that could only help, right? That's a reduction in rates, which reduces mortgage rates, which reduces treasury rates, which impacts the, the general cost of borrowing in, in the, in the debt market. I would note that that rate is a very short-term rate, so it may move, like, the one-year treasury slightly, maybe the two-year treasury, lower, but I, I don't think, like, if, if, if the Fed dropped their target by 1%, I don't think you would see a 1% reduction in a long-term borrowing rate, for instance. But I think it, it could only help, right? And, and one thing I forgot to point out on, on the timeline is that as we go through this process, we really only lock in the interest rate towards the very end. So, that's the pricing of the bonds, where after you've, you've, you've developed your prospectus, you have your credit rating, then you actually sell your bonds, and you lock in a fixed rate for the term of the bonds at that time. So, if we're towards the, you know, three, four, five months down the line, you know, maybe you have the benefit of, of one or two rate cuts at that time.
That have already occurred at that point? And we would see the impact to the bottom line?
Yeah.
Okay, appreciate that.
So, my question is for Patrick, because in the assumptions, there are no interest earnings, and so, what does your crystal ball say? Offsetting with some other?
Yeah. My, my crystal ball is a little cloudy, so I put in multiple options. I'm not locked in, but yeah, if, if your board wishes, I can move into my presentation, and we could circle back to any other questions you had for Bobby. It's, it's the.
No, that's the one that we were just going through.
It's on the left.
Sorry, this, oh, sorry.
This one? Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
Supervisor Green is not going to be happy that this wasn't in the attachments.
I was going to acknowledge that, that this was a late addition yesterday, so you will not find it in the attachments at this time. But I still thought it might help inform the discussion.
I will temper my praise accordingly.
You can praise the others up here and restrict it from me. All right, so, this chart, I hope, may help illustrate some of the, the alternative options that are out there and give an idea of what would happen if, instead of borrowing, this was using 20 million as an example, instead of borrowing $20 million and financing it through a debt instrument, if we were, well, or I guess actually by borrowing it and allowing that money, if you were theoretically take that 20 million, set it aside, the rate of growth it could experience in the treasury pool. And that would give an idea of the difference between the interest that accrues on the debt itself versus what we are earning on that money in the pool, or the potential that we could earn. So, I used a few different examples here. The dotted line that goes across here, that's the debt, yeah, oh, thanks for color. That is the interest that's associated with the debt instrument that we've been discussing. The purple line on the bottom, that's the 30-year average performance for the LAIF fund with the State Treasurer's Office. So, that's 2.7%. So, granted, if you look at it during different time periods, like after '08, I mean, you could see 10-year periods where it's significantly less, but if we're looking at it over a 30-year period, there's other periods where it's significantly more. But 2.7 is what it comes out to. So, you can kind of see at what point further out that it does sort of cross that debt line and where it meets. With these other figures, the 3.3%, that's what we currently earn in our long-term holdings with our custodial bank. So, sort of our long-term debt, that's where our long-term investments, that's our current rate of return. Again, we're building our portfolio out. As your board knows, we're still early and it's construction. So, over the next year, assuming the federal funds rate doesn't change, if there's no dramatic market changes, we expect that rate to continue to grow. I have the green line in here is 4.25%. Just pick that, because that's between what we currently earn and the federal funds rate and, and what we get right now, and some of them are liquid funds. That 5.5 or 5.3 is basically what we're able to earn in certain pooled funds right now that are short-term, liquid. So, that represents the high end of what we can achieve. So, I think it's valuable to look at that 3.3 and maybe that 4 and 1/4, just to give an idea of where we're going to be in the near future. Next slide would be comparison of where we stand at each point in time. I used year 10, 20, and 30. Year 10 partially because that is the first point in time where we have the ability to pay off this debt early, if your board so chose. And I think what you'll see here is, depending on the interest rates, you can, you can see the impact whether we do better, you know, theoretically, better opportunity by borrowing those funds compared to what we earn in treasury, or if we do worse. Now, if you'll see that LAIF average at the 10-year mark, we, you know, we're, we're down, and same at year 20. It's not until you get to 30 years that you've sort of pulled ahead of where you would have been not financing, if, if you had paid cash. 3.3% at the 10-year mark, so if our portfolio held where it's at right now, it would take after the 10-year mark to hit that equilibrium. But where we're trending, when you look at any of these higher percentages, the county has the opportunity to come out ahead borrowing, borrowing and holding on to that cash. This is assuming that we're not spending it, which would be another point that I would highlight. But it's there to spend, and it's there for an emergency, and that's, that's one of my concerns, was that I, I was uneasy with putting out that amount of our present cash. And, and so, I think what I put this chart in to illustrate is not that we'd want to bank on any of these percentage returns, but it's just an opportunity to hedge our bets in, in funding this endeavor, that we have the option, as Bobby discussed, to refinance if rates drop. So, if rates start crashing, we can refinance. If rates are going up, we may want to not pay off this debt early, because our treasury pool earnings are exceeding it. So, I think by issuing this debt, I, I think I just, I found this table helpful in highlighting that it's actually creating more options for us. We're not limiting ourselves by issuing the debt. We're actually opening a few different doors, and so, we can look at where market conditions are in a year, in 10 years, let's say, and decide what we want to do. And we'll have options either way. So, I'm, I'm happy to answer any questions about this, but I thought it was valuable context.
And, and then the construction costs. That's another piece of this, too. And so, do we have any projections on that?
Well. Yeah, that's, that $20 million figure is intended to cover the cost of the project.
Well, no, if we deferred that.
I think she's talking about projections of inflation.
Projections if we deferred it, exactly. So, if we didn't take on the debt and we pushed the project out, and how much more is it going to cost down the road?
I can assure you, it will not go down.
We've been trying for this project for four years or so, and it's gone up quite a bit in those.
Well, it was originally, what, a $9 million project, which I thought was a little light three years ago, so.
I also believe that this figure, and I know Lars isn't here to speak to it, but this figure includes some of the additional options, like the second floor option within the armory. So, this is not, this, this figure allows all of the work to be done upfront, that we're not having to do it in stages. And solar is included in that? Okay. Yeah, so there, there are various options that. Okay, yeah, so there are various options that were initially not included in some estimates. This estimate is including that ability to do everything upfront, not revisiting this for further financing later, not splitting the construction into different stages.
Any further comments or questions? Would you agree that if the rates go down, that your rates go down?
It would be likely that our rates would decrease. We're in the unique position, because we're early in the formation of our investment program, that we are behind, so our rates...
Like the 5.33 where the Fed is, if they start cutting back versus where they've been going, which was the opposite direction for a while, you would anticipate to see that top tier slowly cut?
Yes, I would anticipate seeing that come down, and that's why I included that 4.25 percentage, just so that you had something more in the middle, because obviously, we don't know where Fed rates are gonna go, but we have heard that projection that it's likely to have at least a few cuts in the next year. So, yeah, that's why it's a little trickier for us, because we're such a new investment portfolio that we're still building, so the only difference is, because we're new, even with rate cuts, we're still likely to see continued growth for at least the next year or two.
Yeah, because we haven't hit the ground running necessarily, we're still climbing on.
That's right.
But it's, it just, it sucks. We want good interest rates for any loan that we take out, but at the same time, it decreases the potential for the investment interest that we are already receiving, so it never goes the opposite direction to where we can get both.
Except for the portfolio is diversified and the loan is not. There's a little bit of a difference.
Well, and I get it that you said you put the number in there, and if it's spent, it would not necessarily look the same, and I think that if we take a loan, we'd want to start building it right away, because we'd have to start, we'd have to start paying right away, too.
Well, I think to clarify is that if we were to take out this loan, we would be spending those funds specifically on the Armory project. This is as if we took 20 million, like, we have 20 million in our hand right now, and we're deciding, are we gonna pay cash for the whole Armory, or are we gonna borrow that money? We're taking that money and setting, this is like in the hypothetical, that we're setting it aside, and it's earning that interest rate.
And I know Lars isn't here, but I believe the construction was set for April start, and it just goes full force until complete at that point.
Yeah, I just don't see us borrowing and sitting on it.
No.
Or not.
Are there any comments? So I'll be brief. Go for it.
One, on this particular one, I get it, need for speed. Even at best available speed, warp nine, can we get, is it practical to get a bond package approved and get the Armory project contractually obligated with bond funds we don't have in hand? Yeah, just make it up as we go, we don't worry about the money in our...
Are you talking about the December 31st deadline?
It's not make it up as you go. So what is a budget? So you're projecting what revenues you're going to receive versus your appropriations that you're gonna have during that year. To go out to contract, you need those appropriations. Well, if the board approves going out to debt, now in September budget, you have the 20 million revenue line and the 20 million appropriation line, which allows you to go out to contract.
You can appropriate funds that haven't been obtained through the subsequent approval of a bond issue?
It's, in a budget, it's the projection that you're going to receive said funds, so yes.
Okay.
Think about all the grants that are put in your budget that aren't approved yet. If they're not approved, guess what? It comes out of the budget.
Okay.
Until it is approved or any of that, it is put in the revenue and the appropriations. Until the next budget time, either mid-year or final, it's adjusted.
All right.
It's what you're expecting, not what is actual right this second.
Thank you.
Same as anything else that comes from the state, expected and actually received might be two different things, especially in this type of cycle.
So obviously, we would wait until we're guaranteed going to get said bond before we let the contract, or request to the board to let them go.
So I'll just be brief. My one concern is, we are waiting on organic growth. The methodical, purposeful growth is hopefully coming soon, once we finish our economic development strategic plan, and at that point, we can start taking those steps where we can anticipate to see growth and revenue. But for me, to go in debt without any purposeful knowledge of where we're going to get further money in case that we hit a brick wall economically, I just, I, I'm very uncomfortable with it. I'm uncomfortable looking at the full bore of the entire project versus looking at what's actually needed. So looking at the $21 million approximately, and without a plan other than organic growth that we currently have, I'm not convinced that this is the best way to go. So today, I will be voting no on this.
And I'll just follow if I can. I appreciate those concerns, I really do, but I'm also a survivor of six months of pension obligation hell on the city of Lakeport. And one thing I was stricken by, my, the late provision of the nice graphic here, is the flat parsonage. So whether it's a pension obligation fund or something we're talking about to finance the Armory, having a predictable curve that kind of offsets those concerns about which of these rising lines is really gonna happen, there's a lot of benefit to that. And I think that was one of the talking points. It was very difficult for our Bond Council to get through the City Council, but we got there. We did have two council member committee kind of helping out with that, and I was honored to serve with Councilmember Parlet on that, who I don't agree with on anything, but we agreed on this pension obligation bond package. So this graphic does excite me. I think it highlights kind of the usefulness of this approach. I am concerned about debt financing in general, but I think the lessons we learn with this particular project will pay dividends, because the Armory is not gonna be the last project we're gonna propose for debt financing. So I do acknowledge your concerns, I do have concerns, but I'm gonna be supporting this.
All right, there's no further comments, we'll open it up for public comment.
There is more comment.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Yeah, no, so...
I'm in support. I feel like we need to try something new. We've tried being more conservative in the past and sitting on reserves and whatnot, and we wait, and then projects fall to the wayside, and costs go up, and then projects sit, citizens, taxpayers get upset, and then I don't want to bind my predecessor, whoever takes over in any of these positions, to having to wait for a project that might have come up and say, "It's still not done," you know? And then they're dealing with the, now the onslaught of, "You're not doing anything," when this is like a 20-year issue. So for me, I feel like I want them to see, I know it, it's gonna incur debt, but at the same time, they're seeing their tax dollars being used, and so for me, that's why I feel like supporting it. I'd be able to try something new, in my opinion, so I'm okay with that.
Thank you for your comment. Let's go ahead and open it up for public comment. I see nothing in the Zoom room, and we have a gentleman coming up, Under Sheriff, Bingham. How are you?
Good afternoon, Board. Thank you, Under Sheriff Bingham, Lake County Sheriff's Office. I would just like to, obviously, and I'm speaking from the point of view of the Sheriff's Office, this is a project that is sorely needed in the Sheriff's Office. We have completely outgrown our facility, and we do everything we can to stay within state standards, but, you know, we are absolutely within state standards, but there's a lot of things like our evidence building that are not to industry standards that we can improve with this project. The services that we can provide to our community can be greatly improved with this project by giving us this new office, giving us this space. We have the opportunity to bring in training to Lake County that we've struggled to in the past because of facilities and the size of facilities, which then increases the knowledge of our deputies that we're able to put out on the street. And to, and I won't take too much of the board's time, because you guys have all heard this from me before, when we're talking about this project, but co-locating all of our facilities on one campus is better for the community. Everything is right there with the Sheriff's Office. When they need to come to the Sheriff's Office, we have a correctional facility, our emergency operations center, our communications center, main office, all in one facility for ease for the community, that's huge. During disasters, we have our EOC there, we have our main office for working through disasters and working, it's huge for the department. Currently, right now, our Sheriff's Office is not a resilient structure, it's not a hardened structure, although it is secure. If we had a major disaster, we would not probably be able to work out of our current facility with the new Armory, that being a brick building built as a National Guard Army, built to withstand those type of things, that we could work out of there and continue our operations and serve our community. So I just appreciate the, all the work that, you know, the CAO's office done, Auditor's office has done, KNN, and then your board's support on this, too. Thinking outside the box, thinking about things that we've never done before in the county as far as debt financing to finance this project that is, you know, quite frankly, sorely needed for the Sheriff's Office. And then also, just kind of long-term, by opening up the current Sheriff's Office building, you could have other offices that have outgrown, or other departments that have outgrown their facilities, move into the Sheriff's Office. For example, like probation, that's outgrown their facility, that does not have a secured facility, can then move into the Sheriff's Office, then they would have a secured facility to do their operations out of there. So that's just the point of view in the Sheriff's Office, and why we've been working through this project since Sheriff Martin was here, so thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. I see no further public comments, I'll bring it back to the board. Just to briefly express, this is not a vote against the project, this is a vote of concern of how to fund this project. I think the project is absolutely a necessary one, and I wish we had better options in front of us today. Looking for action from the board?
Move to approve, move to direct staff to explore the two stated options for financing the Armory repurposing project, Lake County Sheriff's Headquarters.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Nay. And then I think that in itself gives direction to staff to bring back final bond issuance agreement. Do we need that in a form of a motion?
Your board may, for the last two items, D and E, you can treat those, approve those by motion separately.
Okay.
Move to direct staff to bring back a final, oh, wait, do you need public comment on each?
Sure, yeah, let's go ahead, and any comments regarding that? Open it up for public comment. Seeing none from either rooms, bring it back.
Move to direct staff to bring back final bond issuance agreement for board approval.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Finally, there's an item that would authorize the CAO to sign all applicable documents prior to the final bond issuance agreement. I'm prepared to make a motion if you want public comment.
Public comment? None in Zoom? None in the chamber?
I'll make the motion I just stated.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any oppose? Motion carries.
Thank you, Board.
Thank you for all the work in this, appreciate it.
Thank you.
And we will come back with a resolution for the actual composition of committee.
Perfect, thank you very much. We are now going to take our 6:11 item, 2 PM, Presentation of Billing and Fiscal Data from Lake County Behavioral Health Services and Status of Repayment to Short-Term Loan from the General Fund. And we have Director Jones and her staff coming up.
Thank you, Mr. Sheriff, Board. Following up on the loan that the board approved for us, of $4 million total, we are telling you how things are going. I will give a very high-level overview, which is that it's positive. We've seen a lot of positive movements in reimbursements flowing through and our EHR working. We are seeing now reimbursements coming in at pre-EHR, pre-payment reform levels, and actually anticipate that they will increase, because payment reform is more money total. So I am waiting for my, I do, I am joined by Amber Luccu, who is our Fiscal Program Manager. Would you walk us through, and actually, there's an attachment on there, it is the, it's like the third one, I want to say, Johanna, if you're, and I'm not a participant in Zoom, but it wouldn't help me now anyways, because my computer is deciding to...
Is that the one with the expenditures?
Yes.
Total, and the different color coded?
It's the different colors, yes, on an Excel, like, printout.
Yeah, that is the third one.
I think that's the really one, the, oh, here it is, perfect. It's, yes, it's titled Budget Issue, no, no, no. I understand. So you will have it, it's attached to the item, and it is the color-coded one that Chair Sabatier stated. So this is our, this is our year-end, I guess.
Got it.
Perfect, wrapping it up, it's a little small on there. I must admit, when I look at these numbers, it kind of is surreal a bit, because it's definitely a significant increase from budgets that we've ever had in the past, but we saw that all of our expenditures totaled about $20 million, which we've paid out, and our revenues were more than that, which is great. So in excess, actually, we have some carryover of about, I want to say, like, $300-ish thousand, a little shy of $300,000, it looks like, right?
And that's just an estimate, it's likely more.
Okay.
But it's been kind of hard to get a level set on what, you know, what portion of this that we're billing up, we're actually getting back, because it's so far delayed.
Yes, so we're still obviously dealing with reconciliation issues with the state, however, the reimbursements for Medi-Cal services are our primary bread and butter here, and they are coming in at sustainable levels. The, as it states in the purple, payments, DHCS, the Department of Healthcare Services, basically closes their books, quote-unquote, to reconcileate through the end of the year, and so they do this every year, this is a normal practice for them, so they begin to get back up again and issue payments in August, and we expect to see a significant, a lot of payments come through in August for Medi-Cal reimbursable services for both the mental health and the SUDS program. Is there anything other that you'd like to add, Amber, that I didn't, I mean, that's really the high-level...
The dashboards are pretty similar to the last time that we presented to your board, and that's due to, like, Lily said, sorry. The dashboards are pretty similar with the payment amounts and the difference between what's been billed, and that coincides with the state budget not being signed yet, so we won't see payment until August, but Legalese mentioned, there's gonna be a very large influx of revenue in August.
And so the last time that we talked about this, we were up to about, I forget if it was $9 million or $11 million?
Yes, so...
And right now, where do we stand as to what's owed to us?
So, we've, mental health, we've probably got about $4.5 million outstanding that's been billed, that has not been paid for...
Up through the end of the fiscal year?
End of the fiscal year, yes. And then for SUDS, we're at just about $3 million outstanding.
So we've gone down to about $7 million? And I know I asked last time, I don't know that there was an answer. What is your typical amount that you wait when things are going well? Like, I don't know if it takes 90 days for you to bill, get reimbursed, and reconcile all that amount, is it $2 million, $3 million, like, on average, that you're floating?
So before payment reform, on average, it was anywhere between $1.5, $1.7 million. That's probably gonna increase, because we're seeing a higher revenue return on the services that we're billing, so we're kind of like in a holding pattern to see what the new normal is gonna be.
So once we get to around $2 to $2.5 million at that point, that seems to be more where we should be?
Yeah.
And that we're not waiting on anything from the past to catch back up?
Yeah, at this point, we can operate comfortably on $1.7 monthly, but we should be seeing a much higher amount than that.
Okay, and I guess you're waiting till August is over, so that the money can start flowing again. Do you have an anticipated timeframe, if things go as they're going, for when the repayments will be made for the loans?
I don't believe that we budgeted to repay them in '24, '25, is that correct?
Yeah, we did.
Oh, okay, we did.
It needed to be done by December, I think it was. I forget, that was 12 months.
What, yes, so it, my bad, it is budgeted. It really is gonna depend on those August payments to fully catch us back up, I would say. What do you think?
I'm hopeful, I really am. There is a lot of outstanding revenue that is kind of hung up in that IGT process and the state payment.
There was also, I mean, little things that add up into big things. For example, we received nearly a million-dollar grant, that was the kind of grant that you have to spend and then get reimbursed for, which is not my favorite, but, you know. So we had done spending on that, because if you don't spend it, you lose it, so there's a lot of reimbursement still that we have to draw down from that. So... So all those little things, quote unquote, will add up. Absolutely.
Okay. I just want to check in with the board since no action is happening at the state level. I think it's useless for you guys to come back in August to tell us no action is happening at the state, and that maybe getting an update during our final budget would be appropriate?
I'd agree with that, yeah.
Okay. And then hopefully, there'll be more good news and things are sliding back down towards where we should be.
I think so.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah. Great idea, and one reason to do that is just, again, I'm not a dashboard reader, but the DHCS dashboards are pretty cryptic, and the numbers I see in there don't necessarily align with the CalMHSA dashboards. So for example, on the DHCS dashboard for mental health services, I'm seeing a $9 million figure, but I'm not seeing that same $9 million figure in the CalMHSA dashboard. And for SUDS, it's like 7.5 approved, but that dashboard doesn't give you how much was claimed. And then in the SUDS dashboard, CalMHSA puts out the only $7.5 million is for billed services. So when we do come back, I appreciate the dashboards because I know this is what you work with, but they are not helping me in any way right now understand this. And I think I can get there because I see on the, the CalMHSA dashboard is a little more detailed, and they do highlight what some of the gaps are, but it's a complicated funding formula here. And so this, these dashboards did not help my understanding much. The middle one did.
So just to maybe provide clarification, the CalMHSA dashboard is a much more real time because they're pulling that directly from our electronic health record, which is what we're billing out of. There is a delay between the CalMHSA dashboard and the state dashboard because the state's taking longer to process the claims and issue the money. So if it would be better, or if your board would prefer, I can completely leave off the DHC dashboards to avoid confusion.
Isn't it also true, though, that the CalMHSA dashboard is only the EHR counties?
It is only the EHR counties.
So the purpose, and happy to do whatever, I don't, you know, whatever's helpful, but I wanted to show the entire state picture with the fact that there was a lot of revenue tied up, just as a, just as additional information, you know, basically saying, hey, it's not just us, but they, they don't match. So there's that.
I, I think there's, the information that's on there is more than enough, in my opinion. I like the comparison to let us know that the state is taking care of the problem. The state is also having this problem. It's not just Lake County. That's always been appreciated to show proof, not just to us, but to the public as well. But I think we're looking for the bottom line of, are we doing better? Are we doing worse so that we can have the conversation of what can we do to help? At this point in time, it seems like things are moving in the right direction, so I'm not going to ask what we can do to help. Let's just hope it just keeps going in that same direction so that we can be done with this and move on to all wonderful Prop 1 and CalAim stuff that is just another ball of wax.
Indeed.
I see no further pens up, and so let's open this up for public. Anyone have, what happened to my Zoom? I don't see any hands up on Johanna's monitor. I don't know what I did to mine, and no one in the room, so thank you very much. Glad to hear the good news.
Thank you.
All right. I believe that concludes all of our open session items except for calendars. I'm getting some nods, I didn't miss anything. Let's go ahead and start with Supervisor Green.
Thanks. Probably do a city council tonight. Have for tomorrow, a Zoom for Lakeport Shelter update, but I don't know if that's on your calendar. I see IFT on Thursday, but I don't remember seeing an agenda for that. On Friday, you hope to attend the discharge and the empanelment of the grand jury up on the fourth floor. I think that's in the afternoon, for those interested. Monday, don't have an agenda yet, but Scotts Valley Community Advisory Council. And that's it.
All right. Supervisor Simon?
Finished meeting today, and then I have informed my two committees, LAFCO and AVA, that due to the passing of a retired member, I will not be attending those two committee meetings. I'm also sending email to Congressman Thompson, there was another meeting happening, letting him know that. So this week, just limited after today's meeting, and then I'll be back here on Tuesday for the board meeting.
Thank you very much. Supervisor Pyska?
I have a number of constituent meetings that I've got to get to in the next couple of weeks, so I'm scheduling those in my blank times. Tomorrow, I hope to have at least one tomorrow morning. I have the Wine Grape Wednesday at the Mercantile tomorrow night. And then on Thursday, I have a meeting with Congressman Thompson in the Cowberry Council in the evening. And Friday, True Mortality Task Force. And then a meeting with John Ferreira at 11:30. And then Monday, I've got my meeting with CAO Parker, and then back on Tuesday.
Thank you very much. Vice Chair Randall?
So tomorrow morning, North Shore Business Association. In the evening, West Regent Town Hall. Thursday, Congressman Thompson meeting, Tango Mike in the evening. I have some meetings on Zoom with Flock Cameras, and then another potential, I guess you could say, group that I, you know, I met with, I told you earlier, I met with a group about the Airbnbs before, and so I've seen if I could probably circle around with that, but it's just for information so I can have. It's not anything I'll impose on staff because, like I said, they're working on it. CAO meeting Monday, and then I have, I think I have a meeting in Blue Lakes, so back here Tuesday.
All right. Thank you very much. I unfortunately got home late last night at about 12:30. Unfortunately, also arrived landing with text messages about a fire nearby my home. Really happy to have the first responders that we have in our communities. Not only did they save the homes where the fire started, but the home up the hill, which got very close during the sulfur fire, was also saved and rather close on that hillside. So really happy about their efforts and what they continue to do to keep us safe. But because of that, I got home very late, and I want to put together a little package of information of all the stuff that I learned and participated in. I just came back from NACO's annual conference over in Tampa Bay. Appreciate staff helping me get there. Luckily, I will get reimbursed for the entire trip as the Economic Mobility Leadership Network that I'm a part of through NACO will be reimbursing that through the Bill and Melinda Gates Foundation. But I'll, I'll come back next week with a little bit more of a in-depth summary of what was there. Granted, I only got to specific sessions and not all of them, but just a quick, brief summary. Sonoma County Supervisor James Gore is now the NACO president, and because of doing so, we have a lot of California representation in NACO throughout all the committees. So I would suggest, and maybe I'll see if I can find the list and send them to staff, and staff can send them to all of the board supervisors so that we, we know who to reach out to if we're looking for changes that need to happen at the federal level or just connections and information that they may have access to that we don't. These are our colleagues throughout the state that are now in representative positions at the federal level, and NACO, similar to CSAC, is a powerful voice when it comes to federal policy and regulations. I was also approved and appointed as one of the vice chairs, which is like one out of 10, so it's not like I'm the vice chair. But I am a vice chair to the Health Steering Policy Committee that I've been a part of for the last year, and I'm happy to serve under the guidance of Phyllis Randall, who's out from Virginia, Loudoun County, I think it is. And she, she is an amazing person to work with, so I'm looking forward to that. And I will bring back information as I continue to work through that committee. I think that's my brief summary of what we did. California, when we did our voting, we voted for George Dunlap from North Carolina to be the second vice chair. On NACO, the first vice chair is JD, I don't want to say Chase, that's not the right last name. But it's JD, he's from Texas, and so we have some good representation and looking forward to working with them as well. Always good to connect with different folks outside of the state in recognizing that we all have very similar problems. If we want to talk housing, I think everyone wants to talk about housing. Want to talk about emergencies, everyone wants to talk about emergencies. So we're, we're not alone here in Lake County at all, and I think that we have good people to reach out to, so we will connect. Tomorrow, I have a LAFCO meeting. I am starting off with a Lakeport Shelter meeting online. I'll only be able to stay for about 30 minutes, so we'll see. Then there's the AVA, which if I'm correct, is being moved to Clear Lake?
I think so, yeah.
So Lakeport will have LAFCO, and AVA will be in Clear Lake. And then later on?
No.
Yeah.
No.
Who's the alternate?
I am.
You are?
Yes.
Yeah, we could, we could use you.
Okay. Well, I didn't know if you needed one or two. What's the, I'll, I'll check later.
How about, we always need a quorum, so as many people that can show up that, that can count for the quorum, the better. And then if my colleague, Vice Chair Randall, doesn't mind, I'm going to tag along with Thomas DeWalt for PEG in order to help him out with some of the new technology that we have for the town hall. Is that this Wednesday? For the Western region?
Yeah.
Okay. And, because I know we got the new, we got the new, what's it called?
Starlink.
Starlink, okay. Yeah. And there's some other issues that he's been trying to rectify as well that have come up. Anyways, I do also have a shelter meeting on Thursday, which will be with a different number of people than the one on Wednesday, discussing some concerns. There seems to be an IFT-only meeting that day as well. I'm looking at Supervisor Green.
I see it there. I can go check.
Okay.
I know we don't have EMCC. I know we don't have EMCC, so I'll check on that. I had not heard about the other shelter meeting, but I don't know if I was intended to be invited to that one, so.
Okay. Then there are multiple meetings after that, a couple of them with Congressman Thompson, the Law Library, and then a city council meeting later that evening. I will see what I can do to come by. The grand jury, was that at 1:30? Yeah. And then eventually going back to Clear Lake that evening, there will be a candlelight vigil for the loss of Jennifer Matheson over in Austin Park, and I'm going to go take part in that. On Monday, I'm meeting with the city of Clear Lake regarding PEG stuff, and then meeting with our CAO and preparing for a meeting on the 23rd. And with that, that concludes our open session. We will have one item in closed session that I will read out right now, 8.1, conference with legal counsel, significant exposure to litigation pursuant to government code, section 54956.9b2e1, two potential cases. And with that, we will adjourn to closed session. Have a wonderful evening.